Welcome, everybody, to the regular Galt City Council meeting for February the 4th, 2025. Mr. Splendario, do we have a report from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council convened in closed session, discussed three items. The council was briefed on all those items and provided direction on all three items, but there was no reportable action as that is defined under the Brown Act. Thank you.
All right, if I can now call the meeting to order, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Here.
Councilmember Pratton?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Farmer?
Here. If everyone can please stand, join us for a silent prayer and a flex.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast, DirecTV, U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.sotcounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, February 7th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, February 8th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/MetrolCable14.
All right, thank you, Tina. Moving on to item F, agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Do we have anything from council? All right, moving on to item G, presentations. Do we have any presentations this evening?
None.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item H, public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. First up, Ken Lee.
Okay, just a moment, though, before we call Mr. Lee up. I wanted to just make a little statement. City Attorney and I spoke about this the other day. Just a little educational. I want to remind people who are not aware of how the public comment works. If you are here to speak on an agenda item tonight, then you will be allowed to speak during that particular topic. The public comment, which we are about to begin now, is just for items that are not agendized. And I mention this again because I think what happens sometimes is the public will come up and they'll make a comment about, I don't know, let's say you're upset that the grass isn't being mowed at your neighborhood park or something. And, yeah, sorry to pick on you. And you'll be, maybe you're very passionate about that and you're asking, when is it going to be mowed? And what are you guys going to do about it? And there's no response from the council. And then we say, well, thank you for your comment. And then you're asked to leave when your time is up. The city council is not really allowed to engage during the regular public comment on particular items. Just because we don't respond to you or answer your question does not mean that we don't care, we're not taking into consideration. There's a reason why we don't do that. The reason is, is because if we were to then have a conversation and have a deliberation and discussion about why the grass isn't being mowed or whatever, and we were to give some kind of direction on that, we have now discussed an item that maybe Mr. Smith, who's sitting at home tonight, he would have loved to came and have gave his opinion on the grass mowing, but he wasn't able to because it wasn't an agendized item and he wasn't notified of that. There's a reason why we don't discuss non-agendized comments and items. So I just want to clarify that for the public, those of you who are watching. So we're allowed to give direction and comments to our staff, but not basically back other than questions. So first comment?
Ken Lee?
Good evening, councilmembers. I just wanted to say I am going to use the new upgraded light across the block. D and Fourth Street. The vehicles are stopping and are slowing down. Not all of them are stopping when the lights lit. The seniors at Galt Place feel it's safer in that crosswalk now, as well as family patrons and seniors that visit the Velvet Grill. When they come across that parking lot now, the cars are stopping instead of some of them flying by at 50 miles per hour. But because this is a T intersection, it's not painted with crosswalk lines, only designated by the brick roadway and the concrete resemblance of a crosswalk. Drivers can be more distracted now by the flashing crossing lights. So basically, no one knows where the boundaries are and where the crosswalk is unless you see the concrete. So consideration can be given to maybe painting a highly visible crosswalk because this is a high-volume used crossing point. The other thing is the Fourth Street promenade between F Street and C Street only has benches at C and F Street. There's no benches along the way between those two points. Seniors walking their dogs would like to use a bench. Patrons from the Velvet Grill who are waiting for their dining parties could also wait out there using the bench. Galt Place senior apartments, they have no outside place close to them to sit and distress, soak in the sun, and get fresh air. We want to get away from all the cigarette smoke in our apartment building. Can the bike racks be replaced with park benches? That way, you know, the seniors have someplace to go instead of sitting in the apartment all day long. And this way, they can bring their dogs out and sit with them and take care of the mess rather than walking and leaving it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Lisa Klotz.
Thank you very much. My name is Lisa Klotz, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak today. It is my honor, on the behalf of Cal Waste, to express our heartfelt appreciation to three incredible businesses of Galt that have demonstrated outstanding recycling habits and commitment to sustainability. Those three businesses are D2 Trailers Sales and Services, who braved the storm today to come and visit with you, and Something Sweet Bakery, who again also braved the storm, and Papa's and Wings, who I believe are working really hard right now and weren't able to make it. They've all gone above and beyond when it comes to recycling and maintaining clean and efficient practices, doing their part to keep our city not just clean, but sustainable. Their dedication and responsibility to recycling is a shining example of the positive impact that businesses make in our community. They're a part of our economic force. They serve our citizenry, but they also serve our environment. By choosing to recycle, these businesses are helping reduce waste, conserve resources, and ensure that Galt remains beautiful and a sustainable place to live and work. And we are very grateful that they're a part of our community. So we want to thank them very much and wanted to be sure that they were, we recognize them at their individual locations, but we wanted to be sure that we recognize them publicly as well. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Business Klotz. And thank you for Cal Waste to continue to do that and honor, celebrate businesses that are doing that. Congratulations to D2 Something Sweet and also to Papa's and Wings. So thank you, Lisa. Appreciate that. Next public comment?
Rodney Pratton?
Yes, my name's Rod Pratton. I live on the corner of Dare and Fermway. And there's a lot of issues going on. For the last 12 years, the road on Dare Way was supposed to be enclosed. But at that time, the fire department on Walnut was not fully staffed, so Tim Templeton did not want to close the road. So now the road has been opened up where Dare and Fermway, or where Fermway is going to go all the way through. So there's different ways that emergency people can get in and get out. Okay, we have traffic violations through there all the time. Okay, we've had cars hit houses, cars take down fences, cars roll over in front of my house, and there was 297 tickets issued in that area right there. So what I'm asking is for that road to be closed, like it was supposed to been closed 13 years ago, 12 years ago. Okay, I waited this long, and I've talked to Sean. Sean's got a bunch of letters that he give you. I got them here. I got the police report where they're saying there's 297 tickets issued. Okay, there is issues there. I know you guys don't want to probably think about it, whatever, but now with the Tesla battery charging thing, we get Teslas coming through day and night, day and night, going over to the charging station. So, and then it goes through the phones. It tells them with the GPS to go through the phones, and that's the way they're going. And that's the same thing that semi trucks go through there. You don't know how many times I've called the police and chased semi trucks out of there. And trust me, I know almost all the police because the police have done me more favors than anything over there. Okay, and as you can tell, they've written almost 300 tickets in five years. People do not stop at that stop sign. Okay, they go as fast as they can and they go. Like I said, I brung this up like 11 years ago, and two, like two weeks after I brung it up on the meeting, there was a car that ended up flipping over right in front of my house. You would have thought maybe the city or whatever would have took a little time and said, yeah, there is you, let's try to fix something. I didn't hear nothing from nobody. Okay, so it needs to be addressed, and I want that road to be shut. That's the original way it was supposed to have been designed. It wasn't supposed to be a fair through for Walmart and for now the charging station. There's thousands of cars over there. I know they're doing a traffic study right now. Tony's not here to give us the numbers or whatever, but anyway, they're doing a traffic stop thing right there. So anyway, that's pretty much what I want to say. I mean, I can go on forever on that corner. I mean, I've been there for 33 years. It hasn't planned out the way that we thought it was going to plan out. I mean, we got cars that take out fences, hit houses, you know, roll over. That is not a normal housing track. That is beyond. It's a racetrack. Okay, and with the issues of the tickets, that's telling you guys, that's an issue. So anyway, I won't go on, but I would like go on for like three hours on this, but I won't. But anyway, Sean's got some letters, and I got some letters. If you guys want some more letters that the neighbors wrote and everything, and because most of the neighbors wanted to come tonight, but I told them that I didn't really want them here, and Sean really didn't want them here. The letters were good enough and everything. And on that street, I got everybody to sign except for two houses. So you got two houses. Basically, I don't know if they live there or not. I don't know if they're there or not there or whatever, but everybody's on board. We want something done, especially with that new road going through. It's ready to open up at any time. You're going to have crashes there at all times. You know, it's not a safe environment to be in. So anyway, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Pratton. Mr. Griffin, do you know the traffic, there's a traffic study being conducted currently on Dare Way? Are you aware of that?
We do have some traffic hoses and traffic counters out there.
Okay.
To collect data.
I would ask my council, I know Chris isn't here tonight, I just want to let you guys know, I did have some dialogue with Chris on this already, but I would, I would like to see if the council would have some consensus on possibly bringing this back as an agenda item, so we can, for one, review the traffic data on how much traffic is on that street. And number two, hear of any ideas that, at some point in a future meeting, not like the next or whatever.
Mayor, may I interject? I would suggest that we can have that discussion when we get to the future agendas at the end.
Okay.
It's a worthy request, but we'll do it at the very end.
Thank you, Frank. All right, next item? Our next speaker?
I apologize. Daniel and Marion Brochus? I'm sorry.
Ma'am, if you're going to come up to the, okay. We won't be able to hear you from down there.
Hi, I'm Marion Brochus. I live on Dare Way on the corner of Dare and Fermway. Right now, it's a three-way stop because the fourth stop is a dead end. It has since been opened up from the construction of the new development going in, and we are seeing cars coming through now, and there's no stop sign. So the city needs to get a stop sign out there, so it's now a four-way stop. This letter is to bring attention to the dangerous situation on Dare Way and Fermway in Galt. Speeding is out of control. I have seen cars going at least 50 to 60 miles per hour, not even slowing down for the three-way stop signs. Cars mostly just roll through them or not attempt to stop at all. On Fermway, down between Rayleigh's and Walmart is a controlled sidewalk, excuse me, crosswalk. We have been in the crosswalk with the signal blinking, and many cars missed us by inches. My wife and I, my husband and I, were working on the side yard of our home, corner of Dare and Fermway, and a car passed another on the left. If we had not jumped out of the way, we would not be here. The car jumped the curb and came onto the sidewalk where we were working. The driver never slowed down, just ran the stop sign and continued on down the street. A large truck while doing a burnout lost control and came through our retaining wall and onto our property. He hit a rock. If the rock hadn't been there, he would have come through my house. This vehicle also did not stop. My truck has been keyed, broken into, and attempted to have the catalytic converter stolen. Fortunately, the thief broke his saw blade before he could complete his attempt. It would have cost me $4,500 if he had been successful. So on any given time of day, there are cars that do burnouts in the intersection and other intersections as you make your way north on Fermway. Bottom line, there is too much traffic in the neighborhood and not enough traffic control. Perhaps we need speed drums, bumps, controlled signal light, blinking red, or cameras installed. Below is a list of concerned citizens. Anyway, thank you for the chance to address the city council.
Thank you, ma'am. Next public comment?
Chris Brosman?
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to talk. I have to say, listening to the comments before me, kind of ties into one of my conversations tonight, which is, it's one, nice to have a place in a city that actually listens to us. Small town is really the reason a lot of us moved to Galt. And yet, to me, recently, it's kind of, I'm seeing a change. And I don't see, like, some of the changes that I'm seeing. One of my favorite memories when I moved to Galt was an old dairyman that used to ride a horse-driven cart. And he'd pull up to the restaurant, or actually the grocery store here in town. And I remember another one that was a cowboy, that he'd tie his horse up outside a CVS. And to me, the days gone by, but fond memories for me. Then, last council, we ended up having a vet here. That drives a golf cart. Seems like he's trying to do everything right. He has his papers, he has his license plate, you know. Truly, I don't know the rest of that story, but a small town, what harm's that guy do when driving a golf cart around town? Do our police not have anything else to do than bother an old guy driving a golf cart? I don't feel threatened by a golf cart. I don't think he's going to run over my kids. He's not going to cause a major accident. And dedication of police force to a guy running around with a golf cart. We overlook a lot of rules in the society and in this world. And to me, the old guy driving around in a golf cart, he's not family, he's not friend. But I thought that was kind of sad, to be honest with you. Another one that I'm concerned about, and there's code enforcement. Seems like we've transitioned from where the town used to be. If you had an issue with what your neighbor was, you'd go over and talk to your neighbor. You'd ask him to change whatever he was doing, or, you know, hey, point out that, hey, you know, that's not per code, right? Sometimes he'd listen, sometimes he wouldn't. When he didn't, I always had a right to go to the city and make a complaint and send it up the ladder and say, sorry, we've got to play this way now. Now, from what I see, and what I see on Facebook and what I hear, is we've got a code enforcement officer out there driving around looking for violations in the city. I don't know that that's a small town. Feel, I understand fines are being held up, handed out. I don't know that that's a small town that I want to live in. Giving a guy a warning and saying, hey, same thing as a good neighbor would do in my mind. Hey, you know, we've had some complaints. We need for this to be addressed. Give him a chance to fix it. Don't hand out fines. I don't know if that's a direction come, I know it's not a direction coming from the council, because I attend most council meetings, but somehow, code enforcement needs to be looked at. And he doesn't need to be a revenue generating machine, in my opinion. Is our town changing? Yeah. Is this the way we want it to change? Maybe. Is this our new leadership in town, driving an agenda? That was it, actually, for my general comments here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Brosman.
Is that for?
No further comments? Okay. All right, moving on past public comment, reports by, we're moving on to item I, reports by city council members on regional boards, committees, commissions, and committees. Mr. Pratton?
I'm ready.
Nothing to report? Okay. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Nothing to report tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Reed?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Thank you.
All right. I myself attended the Galt Youth Commission meeting last night. It was the first meeting that we were able to hold. We actually had enough mentors. We still had some vacancies we're hoping to fill tonight, but it was a good meeting. We covered our budget. We covered some of the projects that the Youth Commission is going to be involved with this coming year. Some of those budget items were our scholarships that the Youth Commission gives out, and some of the fundraising that they're going to do at some of those events. And we got a good group of kids, and some of them are going to be, this is their last year, so it'll be sad to see them go, but we had a good, we got a good group of young adults, and hopefully we'll have a full group of mentors after tonight. And so, it was a good meeting. And other than that, that's all I had officially to report. So moving on to item J, information consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar. Number one is, the subject is to receive and file warrants for the period ending January 23rd of 2025. And item two is the minutes of the regular meeting of January 1st, 2025. Tina, you had a statement about that?
Yes, I'd like to note that the minutes in front of you are entered as amending to show Sean, Mayor Sean Farmer appointed Dan DeNeer to the planning commission with a term ending 2026.
Okay. Thank you for those amended minutes, Tina. So I'll be looking for a motion for the council to approve items one and two.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I have a question about one of the warrants. How do we do that?
You can direct that to the finance director and see if she can answer that question. You can do it now if you like. Well, actually, do you want to pull that item for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to pull the warrants, item one?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then I'll be looking for a motion to approve item two, the minutes of the regular meeting last time. Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve as amended.
Okay. Motion moved by Councilman Pratton, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Item two approved to 5-0. Item one on the consent, Mr. Reed?
I had one question after reviewing the warrants, and I just wanted to ask to see what this check was for. And it's check 234405 to George Reed Incorporated, I guess, for the sum of just over $1.2 million.
Yep. Good evening, Councilmember Reed. George Reed is our contractor for the C Street project, so that would be for their invoice, invoice or invoices for their progress pay estimate for the project.
Okay. Do we have a rough estimate of how much more that we're going to pay him?
I don't at this moment. I can find out and we can report back.
That's all right. Thank you. I'm good.
All right, thank you, House member. Can I have a motion to approve item one?
Mm.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reed. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Item one is approved 5-0. Moving on to item K, scheduled matters, notice of public hearing. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right, thank you. Regular calendar, item L, from, first item's going to be from our treasurer's office. It's going to be a treasurer's report for a period ending December 2024. Mr. Farrell?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This is the first meeting I've attended where the new members have, are seated. My condolences. Okay. With that, I will just say, I'll give you a few statistics, as I usually do. First, from EDD, the unemployment rate, according to EDD, is in Galt is 6.6%. I've always said that's, that's a little high. I still believe that. Countywide, they say it's 4.7%. Honestly, my gut feeling, and I have nothing to prove this with, is our unemployment rate's probably around 5.2. I'll also give you some housing statistics that, that I received from a local realtor. And so, in December, December of '24, there were a total of 19 homes that sold. The square foot, I'll say the median square foot, was 2,005 square feet. The final sales price on those were $635,000. And that comes out to a price of about, of $331 per square foot. Okay? Now, for the month of January, 21 homes were sold. The square footage was less. The meeting was 1,720 square feet. And the final sales price was 545,000. What you really have to look at is the price per square foot, and that's 322. So if you look at 322 in January, and you look at 331 in, in December, you kind of get an idea of what, what homes are pretty much going for. So it's somewhere right around $325 per square foot. Okay? Now, I'll get to the treasurer's report. So the treasurer's report you have before you is from December 2024. And there's a couple things I just want to, want to mention on that. First, there was a certificate of deposit that we have at Farmers and Merchants' Bank. That was an 18-month certificate of deposit. It actually matured January 8th. And that, we received a rate of 5% at that time, again, 18 months ago. I was not able to get 5% again, just to kind of, to show you how interest rates have kind of ticked down a little bit. So what I was able to do was to get 4.5%, but only for a term of six months. And again, when I renegotiated that on January 8th, that was, that was pretty much the, the rate at the time. So again, that will mature in six months. I'll renegotiate it again and see, see what, what we can come up with. Eight, seven, eight months ago, I sat here and I estimated what the amount of total interest that the city was going to earn this fiscal year. And at the time, I said $3.3 million. And now, six months into the fiscal year, I can tell you, that's low. We're actually going to earn a lot, I won't say a lot, I'll say... We're actually going to earn a lot, I won't say a lot, I'll say more than that. My new estimate, honestly, is about 4.4 million. I know, big difference. At the time, eight months ago, we all thought that interest rates were going to tick down, and they did a little bit, but not as much as, as everyone expected. Now, the, the interest rates are pretty much holding steady. The Federal Reserve, just last week, they held them steady. And there's no talk of any interest rate decreases at the present time. So that's why I, I think we're going to do better than what, what I originally said eight months ago. In proof, just for the first six months of this fiscal year, the city earned $2,685,000. So that's, I feel very comfortable in saying 4.4 million at the end of, of the fiscal year. As I said, right now, interest rates, I'm, I'm able to get on bonds that I buy about four and a half percent, so that's good. That's, I'll answer any questions that, that any of you have, but that's, I asked for your approval for the Treasurers Report for December 2024.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Farrell? I always have questions for Mr. Farrell.
Go for it.
I appreciate your reports.
Sure.
I like how you make it, you simplify it so everybody can understand, especially with the housing piece of it, because most people, you know, their house is their, their biggest investment, so it's always good to let people know how their investment's doing.
You can always look on Zillow, too.
Is that what you do?
No, I do not. No, I really don't, because Zillow, Zillow will fluctuate. I mean, yeah, Zillow fluctuates.
I have a question, though, on the, so when that money matured and you put it back into a, a six-month, I'm just curious, with rates, clearly rates aren't going up. If any, I mean, they're holding steady as you mentioned. How long they'll hold steady, we don't know, but if they ever do change at some point this year, it's going to be probably, 90% it's going to be a dip. Would you say that's probably a fair assessment?
I would not.
Okay. Because I'm curious why you only locked it in for six months. I was thinking maybe go longer if you-
Because that was the only way I could get four and a half percent.
Oh, okay.
If, if, they were more than willing to, to renew it at another 18 months, but they were also offering me 3.85%.
Makes sense, all right.
So, again, you got to, to go back to the objectives of what I'm here for in the treasurer, is safety first, right? Got to make sure the money that we have is, is liquid, that we can make at least six months of, we have six months of liquidity, and then once those two are satisfied, then you get the highest yield. So that's why I only went for six months and got four and a half percent.
All right, thank you, Sean. That's why you make the big bucks.
Yeah, okay.
That's a joke.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Sean, appreciate that.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the Treasurers Report.
Move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu. I'll second that. Can I have a roll call?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Report is approved, five to zero. Thank you, Sean, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next items from the City Manager's Office. It is, the subject is the Capo, Capital to Capitol Program. And Mr. Rice is not here tonight, so Ms. Mendez will be presenting that?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Amy Mendez, interim Community Development Director. I will be covering this item this evening for the City Manager. The item tonight is in regards to the Cap to Cap Conference that's coming up in May. The Sacramento Metro Chamber will host the 53rd Annual Capital to Capitol Federal Advocacy Effort in Washington DC this year, and it will be held from May 3rd through May 7th. The 2025 program will include a contingent of approximately 425 regional business leaders and elected officials who will travel to meet with federal officials and advocate for the six-county region. Every year, the Cap to Cap Program works to secure funding and resources for high priority projects that benefit the entire capital region while raising local concerns and goals with officials at the national level. Cap to Cap attendees will work alongside policy experts focused on our region's priorities, and will have the opportunity to add thoughtful insight while helping to identify solutions that address the most pressing issues facing the Sacramento area. The cost for each attendee to participate is roughly $5,000 each, which includes registration, hotel, and airfare. The cost to send up to three members of City Council is included in the council's travel budget. Tonight, we ask that you appoint council members to attend the Cap to Cap Conference in May to represent the City of Galt during this important event.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mendez. So, to tee up this conversation, the idea was to send three members of the council, and then Mr. Rice has declined to go as City Manager, but he does want to send another staff member, or maybe two key members that he think would be important to the trip. So, but there also is discussion that, after review of the, the funding source for this, that if other members of the council were interested in going, that, that was a possibility. So it's, we're not locked down to just three, is what I want to put that out there, so. So, thoughts, council? Anybody want to jump into this conversation first?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just for the clarification, this program is usually every year, and that's the first time we involving in this program.
It is every year. It's hosted by the SAC Metro Chamber. It has been several years since the City of Galt has sent a representative. I think Mark Cruz was the last person who attended for the city. And typically, what you're doing is, you know, advocating for regional projects as it relates to the Sacramento region.
So it was like, at least, like, seven years ago?
Yeah, Mark was, but I think it was Air Quality that sent him up. He was on that board, but I'll speak to this because I brought this up right at the get-go, that I think, think that the City of Galt needs to start getting involved regionally. This is a great networking opportunity, not just there in DC, but here with our regional people, our neighbors. But I can give you a little bit of perspective from the other side. A lot of you know that my daughter actually works for a congressman in DC, not from California. The state that she works for, they do something similar, it's just called something different, and they actually go up at a different, a different time. But from her perspective, as, her words, annoying as it is, because it puts a lot more work on them, it does help to establish relationships with the staffers at the DC level. I know the city already has a good relationship with Matsui's office here, but the way that those relationships work, we can win them over here down, you know, at the district level, but if the DC level says no, that's it. So it's good to start developing relationships at the DC level, especially, we have some huge things that, obviously, we all know the 99 needs to be widened, so either someone's got to talk about transportation. We need the Walnut interchange, maybe we can somehow secure some funds. So this is a, just a, one of those opportunities that gets us, with our regional partners, help them to understand where we're sitting, and so they can help us to help the legislatures, legislators make some decisions that will benefit us. So I am highly, and I, and I will just, I truly want to go, and so, I'm just putting that out there.
I had a conversation with Chris about this today, and he, in our conversations, he recommended that if we could pull it off for all five of us to go as a group, so that we stood together advocating as a group whole for the City of Galt. So, I mean, if it's at all possible, I'm more than willing to go and try to represent Galt the best way we can.
Pratton?
I'm available. I would have to see the issues to decide whether I think all five of us need to go or not on the city dime, but I'm available. I'm not saying I need to go. I'd like to see our senior members go, and Bonnie?
Well, I can't say, from a funding standpoint, I know it's always, you know, I know we're all cognitive of spending money, you know, for things that, but we have, there is, there is council travel fund that's budgeted every year, and the fact that we haven't done this in seven years, haven't done anything like that, I think that's, that's why Chris said that he feels like it wouldn't be a problem. So what kind of direction are we looking for, from us? Amy, are we looking for a decision on, on how many or something?
Yeah, I think how many, so that we can ensure that we have the budget set aside, and then who? There is an orientation that's held as part of this before you go, so you know what to expect, and you have the agenda, the itinerary set, travel information, things of those nature, so that would be something that we would be looking for direction for tonight.
Yeah, I'm just letting you know, we do have public comment, if you want to hear from them before.
Okay. I mean, I, as the mayor, obviously, I would love to go, and I was one of the ones that was going to be slated when we were just talking about three. Of course, I haven't been able to commit 100% yet, to see if I'm able to be away for that many days from work, but, yeah, so, let's go ahead and hear from public comment, if that's okay.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak here this evening. 1970, Cap to Cap started in Sacramento. I personally think we have local networking that we're not doing. And if we look at sending delegates, even we send all five of you, there's over 500 delegates from California, Sacramento, going on this. Do I feel like a citizen that my five are going to be the voice that gets heard and gets something done? Seven years ago, we sent a delegate to Cap and Cap. Mark Cruz, I admire the man, know the man personally. What did we get out of that? What was our return on that investment? I think the dollars in Galt could be better spent with networking, with the water, water people, with everyone here on a local level. I feel like that would achieve a lot more when you're talking a smaller group going up. But throwing $5,000 times five, pretty simple math, $25,000 plus another five for whatever else comes up, $30,000 is not a big dollar, but it's still $30,000, and I'm, I'm not a huge fan of Cap to Cap, as you can probably see, and me, I want to see how the, how the trip will benefit us. If we can't state how the trip's going to benefit us other than networking, I can network on a local level, you guys can network on a local level. Meeting our congressman, I believe that's real important. But our local congressman, we can network with him up in his office and take all five of you and network up there with him, and probably achieve a whole lot more dollars coming to the City of Galt than stitting being five of 530 or six. I know the chamber's looking for this to be the biggest year ever, sending delegates, but I, I don't quite buy into that either. But really, that was just Chris's two cents, and I know you guys will do what you need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brosman. Any other comments? Another comments? Council thoughts? Ms. Rodriguez?
Well, I, to answer, and I appreciate wanting to save money, but to answer Mr. Brosman's, some of us questioning the value. Unfortunately, this is one of those things where I don't think you could say, you know, if, if we all go spend $25,000 to go up there, that, you know, next year we'll have $100,000. We can't do something like that, but the opportunity for the networking is not just regionally, and regionally, it's, we all know how difficult it is to schedule people all at once to get together, because they, they know these things are coming up, and so this is when these things happen. The way that this is set up, and this kind of goes to Mr. Pratton's question, the way that SAC Metro sets it up is there's different topics, and any of us can jump into any of those groups, and it's, those groups get, so I'll just use transportation for, because that's probably one that we would be really interested in. They set up appointments with each of the, well, with many of the transportation members on the Transportation Committee federally. So you're not just meeting with Matsui's office, you're getting to meet with whoever else is on the transportation meeting, and you want to develop those relationships, because normally you wouldn't have the opportunity to develop a relationship with a congressman from, you know, New York or whatever. And it's just a matter of being part of that discussion, those, and, and it might, we not, might not see anything pay out for the next year or so, but that relationship, the memory of, oh, you know, I remember this little town in Galt, they really needed XYZ or something, I wonder how they did that, or, or, you know what, we just got this, and I remember this town, maybe we should reach out to them and see if, you know, this would help them. It's those type of relationships, I mean, we all know how to network, and we know what can come of it, but there's opportunities out there that we could never simulate here together regionally. So I, I do think it's important, I, you know, I do, and like I said, coming from the staffer's point of view, I can tell you right now, because of my daughter's position with her congressman, I, I can't tell you how many stories she tells of when the district calls her and says, oh, we have all these constituents, and they want this, and we told them that we're going to do this, and she says, no, we cannot do that, you don't understand what is at play here. So that's part, that's part of the reason why you've got to get to know these national, or the, the players in DC. You just really do. You have to develop that relationship there as well. So, anyway, I strongly encourage that we, that, you know, at least a few of us go, whether it's all five of us, you know, we just don't know if we split up, we just don't know what each of those different divisions, you know, what connections we could make. Maybe some don't make any, maybe some make all of the connections. And staff as well, I think it's getting, probably even better for staff, so we have the consistency. Some of us might not be here in two years, but hopefully staff is here in 10 years, right? No one's leaving, right? So, anyway, that's my more than two cents, sorry.
Any else you have any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just want to make a comment. This program, as Juanita Rodriguez mentioned, might be benefit to the city. And last, I don't know, five, six years, nobody went from this city. And the other thing, I believe, my comment to, in this program, may I have to go? All other, I think all the council member wants to go. It depends upon what kind of budget we have, or we can decide to the next meeting individually who or how we can decide. If something, it's not a budget, I, I will not go, but I believe this time, I look, everybody want to go, and I highly recommend, Mayor, you know, have to go there.
So, I mean, like I mentioned before, it's always tough when you're, when you're, you know, looking at, people can say, well, we could spend this money for this and be better used for this, this and that, and I 100% you know, agree with some of those things. But I also know that there's a lot of things that I've had brought up over the six years that have reached out to me, which unfortunately, I have to tell a citizen, I can't really solve that locally, like, for example, let's talk about homelessness, for example. I mean, this is literally a larger problem than Galt. It's really a larger problem in California, even though we have a lot of it here, but these are, these are things where you have to go up the, up the totem pole a little higher to bring more awareness. We have an interchange at Walnut, you know, that's like, something like $30 million. I mean, I might be off by 10 or 5 million here or there, but it's a lot. We have a, we have a Highway 99 that needs to be, we could be advocating more locally, but we've been doing that, and it's, feels like, you know, the problem is, being in California, you're kind of in that bubble, and you kind of need to go outside of that bubble to get a spotlight on some things. So I think there's some, some, some big issues in Galt that don't just affect Galt, but just, that are, that are problems that Galt suffers from, that we can't solve locally, and we haven't been able to solve those even- And we haven't been able to solve those even outside of Galt, like with the kind of supervisors officer, even with one congressman, like, like Ms. Matt Suie or, or Senator Nilo, for example. I think it's, it's important that we go and we advocate. You know, I keep thinking about that movie with Jimmy Stewart, Mr. Smith Goes to Washington. I think about that and I mean, you know, maybe nothing, maybe nothing would become of this trip, but maybe something does become of the trip. Maybe it, it brings a $10 million windfall for a construction project. I mean, who's, who's to say? So I, I do think it's important that someone goes. I am definitely in favor of people going. I think it would be important to the city. I feel like we're not being irresponsible with the money to go, being the fact we haven't sent anybody for the last seven years. And that money has been budgeted for travel every time and none of us travel anywhere. I don't ever remember using any of my travel money to go anywhere, except to League of Cities in Sacramento, which I drove myself. So I don't even know that I even used any money for that. And that was in 18, so that was a great networking experience though. So that's my thoughts on it. And do we have another public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Joan Warblin.
Good evening, council members. My name is Joan Warblin and I'm currently a Commissioner on Aging. But I'm also the President of California Chronic Care Coalition, representing about 3 million patients. And also Vice Chair of California Health Collaborative. And this is a organization, they're both nonprofits, looking at healthcare particularly. I'm a nurse. And, but what I want to say about this travel, this is so important. These opportunities don't come up all the time. And with everybody cutting budgets, I think that the fact that you may be able to pull this together, I would love to see all five of you go. I can tell you, I have held my positions for 30 years in these organizations as Chair and Vice Chair. And I've spent a lot of time traveling back and forth to Washington. It does pay off. It isn't just a matter of the five of you going and talking to people from California. It's the connections you make that go far and wide that can pay back in the future. I've had problems that we didn't have an answer for, but I called a staffer in Washington DC and they said, oh yeah, I know somebody in Colorado who has the same problem and this is what they're doing. You have no idea the payback you get from something that is more than just a plane ride to Washington. You get to meet staffers and I can tell you, all of the staffers here, you run the show. It's you that we go to when we want answers. And you get to meet the staffers and don't forget to do that because they're the ones that are going to help you out in the long run, whether if it's funding that you're looking for, if it's advisement that you're looking for. You have no idea the people that I've been in contact with that have helped me in my organizations. And we're connected to the state. We have eight contracts for senior citizens that we manage. So it's been very helpful, that the unexpected, you know, connections that you can make. So I think you can tell I supported a whole lot. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Warblin. Any additional comments? Final thoughts from anyone in the council?
I just have a quick question. Aren't we up against a deadline for registration? Registration, yeah. I was going to let you know, I just came across an article over the weekend in the Tracy Press. And the city of Tracy, their trip is called One Voice, I believe. And so that's San Joaquin County Council of Governments organizes it. And the city of Tracy pitched a project for an interchange at Coral Hollow in 580. And they were just awarded by the Department of Transportation $42 million. So clearly, you know, I think that it does work if you can show the need and, you know, build those relationships. And it may take some time, but I think, obviously, we think it would be worth it.
I, I remember a, when I went to, I mentioned I went to League of Cities in 18 and it's where you get sent as a new council member to do like training, so to speak. And it's up in Sacramento, but you meet people from cities all over. And I remember, it was very educational, but I remember I was having a drink that evening before I went to my room and there was a council member from Paradise. And we were having some conversation and I forget the other gentleman who was in the conversation, what city he was from, but we had a really good discussion about something that was going on in Galt at that time and they shared the same problem. And we kind of talked about what they did. And it's very, you know, it's very helpful to speak with other people on things. And this is not really the same as the DC thing. But I think, you know, I would be lying if we said that there's going to be, there's no way we can guarantee that this is going to be, you know, fruisiary for Galt with any money, like you mentioned, Bonnie. We would be, we can't promise the people of Galt that that's what would happen from this trip. But I do think that there are sometimes just introductions and relationships you make with people at a higher level that can really, really be helpful. And I think that in the grand scheme of dollars, it really isn't a big price to pay to do that. Whether we should send five or just three, I, I think that's up to us to all decide. Again, I'm unconfirmed yet. If I could go, I, I would need to find out quickly if there's a deadline, but I do think people should go. So I'm in favor of the trip progressing, moving forward. I think we need to decide if we want to try to make it where if anybody can go out of the five of us, then we'll send whoever can go. Or we want to limit it to three. What, what do you guys think? What do you want to do? Or are you not supportive of, it sounds like we're all kind of supportive of it.
Support the trip, for sure.
Okay.
At least two to three council members. Beyond that, you know, like you said, I'm available, but I don't have to.
Okay.
I do agree with you though. I mean, the networking is very good. I just came back from that League of Cities and.
It was very helpful.
Tim?
I think the more, I think the more we can get in touch with these people, the better. Right, I, I, everybody knows I work for the state. So those, those relationships that you can build, just at every level, local, state, county, federal, they all can come around in unforeseen ways. And they can benefit you in ways that you can't even imagine right now, but you won't know until it happens.
Okay. Well. So I want to say I do appreciate Mr. Brosman. A lot of respect for Mr. Brosman's always here speaking and I always take his comments very seriously. And I appreciate him always keeping the city in check for spending, for sure. And I appreciate all the comments that people make, not just Mr. Brosman, but in any subject. So I do want to just state that. With that said though, I, I do feel strongly about this. I would like to make a motion that we send the entire council if they can go. Now, if someone can't go, then we send four, or if two people can't go, we send three, whatever. But as far as the council members, I would like to make a motion. I feel like we can send a delegate of all of us if it's possible. So that's, that's the motion that I'm making.
I will do this second.
You wanted to make an alternate motion?
Nope, I was going to second it.
Okay, we have a motion by myself, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu, to send a delegation of possibly up to five council members. And, and staff members, do we need, do we need to include the staff? I, I don't know, Chris, he's not here, so it's hard.
I don't think you need to include the staff members. We'll, they'll figure that administratively. Just let Chris and/or Amy know, obviously, as soon as possible for registration purposes.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Moved five to zero. Item in, City Clerk's Report. First item up tonight is going to be the appointment to City Council Committees and Commissions. Ms. Hubert?
Oh, right. So this is follow-up from our January 21st council meeting. Councilmember Pratton was absent. And accordingly, needs to make his appointments. I'll go through them individually. We also still have vacancies on the Galt Youth Commission by Vice Mayor Sandu and Mayor Farmer. And also Councilmember Rodriguez also has a vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Commission due to lack of applications. So I'm just going to go, this does not need a motion at the end. They're individual council appointments.
Okay.
So I'm just going to go through it. First of all, it's the Beautification Committee. Councilmember Pratton, we have one application, Paige Lamson.
Yes, Paige Lamson.
The Commission on Aging, again, one vacancy by Councilmember Pratton. We have Kenneth R. Lee and Brendan Moore.
Point Brendan Moore.
Galt Youth Commission, we have three vacancies. Vice Mayor Sandu, Councilmember Pratton, and Mayor Farmer. So Vice Mayor Sandu?
I'm going to appoint Amber Gray.
Councilmember Pratton?
I will appoint Allen Harris.
And Mayor Farmer?
Well, I was going to appoint Mr. Harris. Who's the third applicant?
Joshua Washburn.
All right, I don't know you, Mr. Washburn, and I apologize that I did not reach out to you to interview you because I had already, but I will appoint him. I want to thank everybody for applying.
Parks and Recreation Commission, we have two vacancies. One applicant, so we'll continue to advertise. Councilmember Pratton, it's Francisco Javier Gallegos Jr.
Yeah, I'll appoint Francisco.
And then Planning Commission applicants, we have one vacancy. Councilmember Pratton's appointment, we have Keith Jones, Jeff Hood, Jessica Selby, Brian Gold, Carlos Bermudas Ramirez, and Linda Clenden.
I'll appoint Keith Jones.
Public Safety Committee, one vacancy. Councilmember Pratton, America Velasco, Carlos Bermudas Ramirez, and Gerard Jerry Soder.
Uh, Jerry Soder.
And I believe a couple of them are in the audience, if you want to ask them questions or.
Yeah, would any of you, I see Mr. Soder, I see Mr. Harris. Would either of you like to say a word? You don't have to. Okay. Well, thank you for applying and offering to serve on those commissions and committees.
So again, we'll continue to advertise for Parks and Recreation Commission.
Was there, was there Commission on Aging?
Yes.
We did, okay.
Brendan Moore was appointed.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, moving on.
Okay. So this was our item tabled also from our last council meeting. It's to review and select the vacancies on our city council appointments to regional boards, commissions, and committees. I'm going to go through the vacancies one by one. It's also to review any assignments where city council members desire to be removed from a current position and make any other change, and/or make any other changes assigned, assignments as desired by city council. Again, this, we'll go through them, you guys can discuss amongst yourself, but at the end of this one, we will need a motion. So I'm just going to go one by one of what was in your pocket. So the first, they just stuck together. The first one is our Kasoomis Community Services District, which is CSD two by two. Right now, we have Councilmember Sandu on a vacant position. So Councilmember Sandu, you continue, you can continue.
I will keep mine.
Okay, and then we have a second member open.
Hold it down.
There we go. I would like to be part of that.
I was thinking that you would be, that's your wheelhouse, so. Thank you, Tim.
Next is the Force 57 Diver, Differ Compensation Plan. I believe it meets periodically with HR, very, maybe once a year. Maybe once a year.
It's an easy one, I'll take that.
You'll take that? You're joking? I was going to say I'll take it, but.
I was joking, but if you want.
I, I'm looking for, I'm looking to lighten the load a little bit because I took on, you know, it's stuff with the mayorship, so I'll take that one because it's very infrequently, yeah.
I thought you were telling us you were looking to retire.
Next is Cities and Schools Together or CAST. Right now, we have Mayor Farmer, a vacant second position and a vacant alternate.
I definitely would like to stay on that for my position.
Okay, then we have the second member.
I'd like to be on that.
It's a good fit.
And an alternate if those two cannot make a meeting.
Anybody want to be an alternate if one of us can't make it? Bonnie?
Sure, I can be alternate.
Next is Galt Youth Commission, we have Mayor Farmer.
Yes, I'll stay on that.
Public Safety Committee, we have Vice Mayor Sandu and we need an alternate.
I will keep my, actually one year.
I'll be the alternate.
City Select, Selection Committee, that changed, that's now Mayor Farmer. It's concurrent with mayor term. Greater Sacramento Economic Council, that's our city manager. Sacramento Area Council of Governments or SECOG, we have the vacant position and an alternate.
So I'm willing to do this. Chris has talked to me many times. And so if, unless someone else wants it, I will step up and do SECOG.
I think you'd be great at it and I agree with Chris's, yeah, yeah. I, I would be willing to be an alternate, although my schedule is probably not any easier than yours. But unless somebody else wants to be the alternate. I, I, I want to preface that, you know, I only have a year and a half left in my term. So I think it's important that new council members, these are, these, SECOG's a big deal. It would be better if, although an alternate may not, but it might be better if a new council member be the alternate so they can get their feet wet in that.
But then again, I'm only here for, for sure, for a year and a half as well, so.
So if, if nobody else wants to be the alternate, I'll, I'll take it.
The Criminal Justice Cabinet, that's the Chief of Police. We have the Sacramento Homeless Policy Council. That meets maybe three times a year. I know Mayor Farmer's been on it.
Yeah, Mr. Vandenberg was just recently on there, right? Yeah. You don't, you don't, you probably don't recall if they're still meeting on Zoom or not, if they do that?
Um, I, it's been a while since they've met, so I'm not sure.
Sure, I'll, I'll take that one because I'm looking to offload another one that I have, so I'll take that one.
Then we have Sacramento Local Area Formation Commission, LAFCO. Last year, we were the alternate. This year, we are the main seat from January 2025 to December 2026. And we just need a main seat member because actually the alternate member is Citrus Heights.
Mr. Matt, would you be interested?
I'll take that one, sure.
I mean, you're the only retired person here, so we're all, we're all looking at you.
Well, I know, and that one's in the evening.
You have the most time.
That one's in the evening, so I thought maybe somebody else would want it, but.
Oh. All right.
That's all right, I'll take it.
So Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, we need the main seat and an alternate.
When, when do they meet and how, what is it, how often?
For Thursday of each month at 9:00 AM, County Board of Supervisors Chambers.
Yeah, I can't do that. We're looking at the retired guy.
Okay, bring it on.
It's a 9:00 AM stuff for us working people.
I figured I'd have one or two of those.
So you're.
Yes.
Okay, and then alternate?
I will do the end.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission, one vacant seat.
How often do they meet?
That's quarterly, March, June, September, December, first Thursday at 2:30 PM in Sacramento.
Okay.
If nobody want to do it, I will do it.
Okay. All right, Mr. Sandu's going to take that one.
Sacramento Public Library Authority, we have Mayor Farmer and our alternate is City of Vailton.
I've been doing this. It's. You can meet on Zoom if anybody's interested. It's, the meetings are not very long. They have some important meetings. I thought the library was pretty low-key, but it's pretty important. They have some important meetings, I thought the library was pretty low-key, but it's pretty important stuff, but it's, uh, but it is, you can, you can attend on Zoom, so you wouldn't need to be there if anybody. And we, it's, and how, and it's, what is it, once a month, right now?
The fourth Thursday of each month at 3:00 o'clock p.m.
I'll do it.
All right. It's usually in the afternoon around 3:00 or 3:30-ish, just so you know, Tim.
Then we have the Sacramento Transportation Authority, STA, City of Vailton is the main seat, and so we need an alternate, we are the alternate seat.
I will do the alternate.
South Sacramento Conservation Agency, Vice Mayor Sandu, and we need an alternate. Do you want to? Keep your...
I will keep that.
And then, so we need an alternate.
I can be the alternate.
South Sacramento Conservation. Councilmember Rodriguez is alternate. Last one, Casumnis Groundwater Authority, they meet here in Galt, we need the main seat. First Wednesday of the month at 8:30 at 455 Industrial.
8:30 in the morning?
Mm-hmm.
On Wednesdays?
Yes.
What, once a month on a Wednesday?
Bimonthly.
Bimonthly.
So every other month? Or twice a month? Sorry, would you say bimonthly?
Yeah, every other...
Every other month.
Yeah, I was just...
I can do it unless you want it.
Go, go ahead. Like I said, I'm gonna lighten up what I have going.
If I may interject for a second, Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Are you volunteering to go to tomorrow's meeting as well?
What?
The, the, there is a meeting tomorrow at 8:30.
Oh.
Where I would like to talk about this afterwards, and I can cover for you for the first one.
Sure. I thought you said Mars, I was like, I'm not...
That's what I thought he said.
Sean. Load wasn't as heavy as I thought it was gonna be, I'd be willing to take that alternate for CACOG. Might learn something. So, you got that.
So we're changing CACOG alternate?
Alternate, yeah, to myself.
Okay, we just need a motion.
Moved, so moved.
Second?
Seconded by Councilmember Pratton, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Approved five zero. Tina, if you don't, hadn't already planned on doing this, would you mind shooting us all an email?
Yes.
Stating which one's wrong, so we can remember. Thank you. All right, moving on, item O, comments by staff. Do we have any comments by staff this evening?
We do. I have one, actually, two things to touch on, and then Director Solis does as well. I didn't hear from the Public Works Director, okay. Looks like Director Griffin also does. I wanted to touch on real quick, this is something that John actually might be covering, but in case he doesn't have this. We have a traffic advisory that was posted for a lane shift on Corillian that's gonna be starting on Monday. That's on our social media page, so it's available for folks to take a look at. But that will be, it's scheduled February 10th through February 24th, so we will be pushing that out on our social media pages. It'll also be on the, the city's website. And then, that leads into the next comment I have, which is for Galt Connect. I know many of you have the Galt Connect app on your phone, and we wanted to just let you know that there's push notifications that you can turn on as part of your app, and we'll be sending out notices to the community. We've tried to start utilizing those more often, specifically if there's traffic impacts to the community, and so if you don't already have it on, we'll, please, you know, turn it on, also let folks know who utilize the app to make sure that those are turned on. We'll start utilizing that more often, and so a push notification will go out on Sunday as it relates to the traffic shift on Corillian. The last one, I'm not sure if Director Solis was gonna touch on this, but we just launched, I say we, but I mean that, Genesis and Jackie, our community engagement special events. There's a survey that's out right now for the Sounds of Summer Concert Series, and so we're gathering feedback from the community as it relates to the concert series that will launch this summer, so if anybody's interested, please jump on our social media and you can take that survey. And that's all I have this evening, I'll turn it over to Director Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just wanted to touch on our Winter Bird Festival we had this last weekend. Unfortunately, the weather didn't cooperate with us, and we had to cancel several tours, but showing up to McCaffrey was, was nice to see. Jackie did an incredible job with what she had to do with, with the weather, and I just want to thank her for all her hard work, she did a great job.
Two quick items, I'm sure we all noticed how wonderful the storm was tonight. There is sand and sandbags available at Public Works should any of the community need them. Again, it's a, it's an honor system, but we're also hoping that people take them just for sandbags and not to fill their, any of their, you know, sand areas or anything in their yards. But there, there is sand available at Public Works yard. And then, Councilmember Reed, to answer your question, we have, on how much we've paid to date on C Street, we have paid approximately 3.8 million to George Reed, and that leaves about $2 million left unpaid. You're welcome.
All right, so that concludes staff comments. Okay. Excuse me. Comments by city council members, future agenda items. Mr. Pratton?
No future agenda items, no other comments.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for all the staff, their hard work, thank you for the public comments. All the public comments is very important, and there is some public comment tonight I have a concern. So we will discuss with the city manager when, when I get, when we get, when I get a chance. And I also like to give the congratulation, all the new pointees for committee and commission, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Reed?
So we'll start with the future agenda items, I know I brought one up a couple weeks ago when we were gonna check the agenda to see if there was room for the Casumnis Fire District to come and give a presentation on the 18th. So I wanted to throw that one back out there. And then the comments, I want to start with, I got to attend the court case on Friday for the placement of the sexually violent predator in right outside of our town. And I wanted to thank everyone that was involved from the ground up. It wouldn't have went the way that it did if all the residents of Galt didn't pull together and write all those letters and give the judge everything that he needed to see that that wasn't the, the right place to put him. So it was because of everything that all of you guys did that's, that basically saved that part of town from this type of person, so thank you. Number two, we had a wonderful tour of the wastewater treatment plant this week. I never thought I would be so excited to learn more about bugs and what happens to your stuff when it flushes out of the house and how it gets all the way back to the river. It was amazing, and if anybody ever has a chance to tour that facility and have these guys just talk to you about what they do, they're very passionate, and they know more than I'll ever know about that stuff, so that was fantastic. And then the last thing, I haven't had a chance to see him yet, but, and this kind of dates back to the Christmas parade, I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Solis. I was, I, I want to say I was surprised, but I, I've known you for a little while, so I'm not entirely surprised. To see a director out in the middle of the street directing traffic when, you know, there are several other people in the city that can do that, that shows you what kind of directors that we have that work for the city. Ones that'll get down there and do what needs to be done, and even my son was like, isn't that the guy that's in charge of Parks and Rec? And I was like, yep, it is, so I wanted to say, I wanted to say I appreciate everything that all of you guys do, because it, it, we have a really good team here, and it shows every time we have something like that. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Rodriguez?
So I 100% agree with Mr. Reed on almost everything, or everything he said. We do have great staff, and that was definitely highlighted on this wastewater treatment plant tour. It's actually, I think I've sussed out, this was probably at least the third or fourth one I've been on, when they've held different things for... But to, and they've all been good, but to see the passion that these employees have about bugs and other things, but making it work, it just was, it, it was very enlightening, and I, I know that that same passion is in every single department, or else they probably wouldn't be here, and so I, I, I don't even think we can thank enough the unsung heroes that would just do everything in the background, and, you know, we flush our toilet and don't even think about it, we, you know, attend an event and we don't think about it, just, it's, we're there and for our enjoyment, and we just don't think about it, and there's so much that goes on, and anyway, it was just, I was very, very happy and just loved to see the passion. Quick question for Mr. Griffin, with the Corillian changes that are happening, are they gonna be fixing those manholes that, you know, all uneven during this change?
The manholes that are in the...
All up and down Corillian.
Are they the ones on the northbound Corillian on the left lane?
Yes.
Those are the, I believe those are existing lines, so those would, those are separate from what... So this project is the completion of the Forest Main for Liberty Ranch subdivision project, they have to bore from where their current pit is, and also some open cut trench to connect to the live out pump station.
Do we have in the near future a plan to fix those, or...
We are working on the Corillian Safety Improvements Project, and that will be part of that project, where we will be performing pavement maintenance for the entirety of Corillian.
Okay.
So that is a project under design, and it'll probably be out to bid later this year.
Okay.
Probably will be out to bid later this year.
Great, great. It is a little fun, you know, when the kids are learning to drive, they hit the, but anyway.
Targets, aren't they? They're just targets.
Exactly, exactly. No, 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 Mom, I'm gonna drive in the fast lane. I do want, again, to reiterate that thanking those who have applied for the committees and commissions. It's great to serve your community, and you learn a lot and learn the reason why we need volunteers, and you just become engaged with your, with your community, and so I'd love to see it, so thank you all that have applied, and that, I look forward to seeing the great things that you do with the kids and with staff, and I'm, I'm just really looking forward to that, so thank you. As far as future items, I'm gonna go back to kind of what I brought up last time. And I'm, I'm, I'm trying to think outside the box, and so I'm wondering if my fellow council members would even entertain the thought of looking at some sort of city ordinance that had some sort of governing arm over these larger complexes that rent. So I don't know if we pick a number, like if they have more than 50 units or something, so that we have some, some sort, I don't know what we can have, I don't know what the, the laws are out there, but if we, if you could support me in maybe directing staff to look into see what, what we can actually do to help govern over some of these larger complexes that maybe need some incentive to do better.
Well, I know, I'd, Chris, I'd spoken with Chris briefly in, in the context of Galt Place. And I too was interested to see if there was anything, I'm not really a, one to be an advocate for government oversight all the time, kind, you know, I don't... But in this case, where it involves citizens, and I think, you know, being, if the city can be some sort of, not advocate, but have some kind of whatever, I, I would be in favor of having staff bring back to us what our options could be, what options are out there, if any, that we could have some side, something in our municipal code to do that. So I would support looking at what that would, what, what there could be. I would support that. Okay, with that, you have the three for direction, Ms. Mendez, if you can pass that along. I, I'm looking at you, because I feel like you're, okay. Should I be looking at Frank, or is Amy, okay. Anything else for you?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. All right, just to echo a couple things, super big victory for the SVP thing. I want to thank everybody, the school boards who wrote letters, the police department, the police chief for writing his letter, the county supervisor Hume's office for writing his letter, all of you, and the letter that we put together on behalf of myself. But most importantly, the 250-plus some odd emails and letters that came from the citizens, those are the real power that came behind that. So for everybody who showed up to that meeting and was passionate about, you know, coming together for that cause, and that went home and wrote those emails, we were successful. With that said, though, we can't let our guard down, and I have had dialogue with the city manager on some kind of out-of-the-box ideas of how we could get in front of stuff like this in the future, so hopefully we'll bring back some ideas to council very soon on some thoughts we, we have on how we can be proactive instead of reactive on things like this moving forward. Thanks to, I want to, the tour of the wastewater treatment plant was very cool. I've been out there before once, but it is, it is mind-blowing how, how something like that goes on behind the scenes. People, you know, most of the people in Galt don't even really know that it's happening, but those guys are out there, you know, they're running a 24/7 operation, handling, you know, millions of gallons of water that could be a catastrophe if something was to go wrong, and they're out there, you know, on the front lines of that, and the story about the storm, you know, where they went from 1.8 million gallons to 9 million gallons during that storm, and they were literally sitting on the edge of their seat, you know, all, all hands on deck, making sure that the system went as planned to handle all that stormwater. So my hat's off to all those guys out there, and, and the supervisor, plant supervisor Matt, super, super intelligent, obviously. Just, a lot of that went over our heads, but it was fascinating, he's very passionate about what he does, so please pass along to Matt and, and, and is it Rev?
Rev, yep.
Both of them for, for the tour, thank you very much.
Thank you for the comments, my compliments, I make sure they know.
And thanks for the sandbag station, for those of you who did not hear, Mr. Griffin, sandbag station is at Public Works. Anybody watching needs sandbags, or if you know a neighbor, or you can pass that along, for those of you who are still here, sand is available for those who may need to take care of a flooding situation.
You just have to bring your own shovel, right?
No, there's shovels there. I saw shovels there.
There may be shovels there, but it's probably better to bring one just in case.
But I saw something that said you had to bring your own shovel.
Oh, okay. And I want to thank, Mr. Lee brought it up earlier, but I want to thank Public Works or who else was involved for the crosswalk at Fourth and D Street. I don't know if you remember, well, some of you don't remember, but Chief probably remembers, but in the Public Safety Committee, like eight years ago, I advocated heavily for a crosswalk, some sort of signage or anything at that crosswalk, and I got nothing but pushback from the city council at the time. I was told every excuse from, it's not a crosswalk, it's a crossing area, or do we want to clutter up Old Town with more signs? And I heard every kind of excuse there was, and we got pretty much nowhere, and then voila. We had this beautiful crosswalk, lighted, all the things, super excited, I've heard nothing but positive from so many people about that crosswalk being there, so thank you so much for getting that done, I appreciate it. Only took eight years, but better late than never. Last but not least, I wanted to bring back the agenda item I suggested earlier. I would see if the council would support agendizing at some point in the future. Not, you know, it's not an emergency, but soon as we have a spot-on agenda, to bring back a discussion about the Adair and Fermoy. It, it's become a bad thoroughfare for people going to Walmart, and it's gonna only get worse before it gets better because of the new developments, and I think we, I would, I would like to look at the traffic data, see what kind of numbers, I would, I think if we can bring it back as a discussion item and look at the data, and then have a discussion about what options are, if any, Chris is aware of this, I've spoken to him, so would there be a consensus from council to have that come back? Okay, all right, so Amy, you have that?
May I ask one question?
Yes.
Does the council desire this to go to the Public Safety Committee before reports given to council, or should we bypass public safety on this item?
When is the next public safety?
End of March.
End of March?
I think that would be good, because then you can include fire, because obviously they were part, I know it was Galt Fire at the time, but that might give fire an opportunity to do their own research and, and, and figure out, because it might still be a no-go.
Yeah.
CSD, so.
I, I, yeah, I would... I, I, yeah, I would, I think that'd be a good idea. Would it be fine if we did that? Okay, so the direction would be to agendize that for the, for the very next Public Safety Committee to, but I still would like to see the data from the traffic study come to us. So even though it's going to Public Safety, I would like to have it then come from Public Safety to the council. I don't want it just to die, I want it to come to us from there and see what their thoughts on it. Maybe they can, okay?
We can do that, and when we have all the data compiled and analyzed, we can provide a pass-through memo as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Griffin. So with that, I have nothing else, I believe, at the moment. So we will adjourn the meeting at 7:36. Thank you all.